At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting this evening. We are originating from the Emergency Operations Center, which is located in the Merit Center in Marshall. The, um, due to the, um, continuing, um, uh, emergency regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, um, the majority of our council members are participating by distance. So at this time, I will call on the city clerk Kyle Box to take the role.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Here.
Steve Meister.
Here.
Glenn Bearcoller.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Lazzinski.
Here.
The council is all present, uh, will move forward with the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item of action then would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on November 24th, 2020. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
I move approval as presented.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John De Kramer to approve as it has been presented. We will move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Tim Lazzinski. Jim Lazzinski.
You're on mute, Jim. He's rose.
The motion does pass. We will move forward then with a agenda item number three, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding, uh, border states, electric, uh, regarding a business tax abatement request. Following public hearing, where we'll take, uh, any public comment, we will then consider the resolution that would approve the business tax abatement. So I will call on city administrator Sharon Hanson to conduct this public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, just some background on this particular request for a commercial tax abatement. Um, the discussions with border states electric started close to a year now. They have had interest in relocating from a current leased space, uh, within the city of Marshall to another location. And it would entail new construction in the packet was, um, some proposed plans. It wouldn't mean a construction of a 13,200 square foot facility and a 20,000 square foot yard. We did do some early estimates on property tax on the improvement, uh, related to the, to the buildings, and that was also included in your packet. Just some background on border states, and let me also add, we do have, I believe, several border states, uh, electric representatives as part of the Zoom call, Sean Christensen, Bentley Graves, and I, I don't see Dan Johnson, but, um, if he is on as well, uh, he may offer some comments on this particular proposed project, uh, within the city of Marshall. Border States Electric has been a long-term presence in Marshall. Uh, we had just had a discussion prior to the meeting here. We think their existence in the city of Marshall is 40 years plus. Uh, they've been a good corporate citizen as well in the city of Marshall. This construction land purchase would not occur without the tax abatement. We are aware and know that the state statute does not require a but-for test, neither does our own commercial tax abatement. But, uh, this is a true economic incentive for border states. The tax abatement will only be issued once tax capacity has increased. There is, uh, thus no risk on the part of the city. As I stated earlier, currently, uh, border states is, is leasing existing space. Construction of a new facility owned by border states would mean a more long-term committed presence in the city of Marshall. The, uh, property that they're looking at is currently city-owned land, which is leased out on a, uh, agricultural business on an annual basis. It is near, uh, Marshall Machine Shop, just off of Channel Parkway, uh, so a fairly good location for border states. And, uh, we believe a, a, a good location in terms of the city of Marshall as well, uh, because of the, the parcel involved. The, uh, available land in southwest Minnesota means that there's competition for businesses, and, uh, it's competitive, and, uh, we want to ensure that we secure their commitment to Marshall with this particular tax abatement. The, uh, tax abatement is an economic development tool authorized by Minnesota statutes. And, um, we, um, structured the tax abatement over a 10-year period, which thus means that the city of Marshall has interest in seeing them, um, continuing with their commitment. The, uh, city will also help border states through the county tax abatement program as well, as we are aware, they also have a commercial tax abatement program. And we have completed an application on their behalf to go forward to the county. I'm going to pause now and, um, ask if Sean Peterson or Bentley Graves, and again, I don't know if Dan Johnson is on the, on the call as well, if they wanted to add any comments, maybe describe the project and kind of long-term goals of their construction project here in Marshall.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. The representatives of border states, or you wish to make any comments at this time as part of the public hearing?
Uh, good evening. This is Sean Peterson with Border States. I'm currently the branch manager, uh, responsible for Marshall. Uh, I have two other locations, but, uh, we're talking about Marshall here. This is a long-term solution for border states to, to continue to be in Marshall. Uh, our current location does not meet our building needs, nor does it meet the city's, uh, needs of where we're really located. We're, we're in a residential neighborhood. Uh, this gets us out of that neighborhood. Um, it provides, uh, us stability to get our, our trucks in there without impeding on the, the residential neighborhood. We have a lot of semi-trucks that come in and unload freight every single day, and currently they're, they're traveling down that road, uh, by Forest Street and, uh, over there. So it is a, a burden to the neighbors in that area. We're excited about the project. I hope we can move forward with it, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that, uh, anybody might have of border states or the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. We'll open it up then for any public input as part of this public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Go ahead, Craig.
And I, uh, you know, have discussed the proposal here a little bit with Sharon, and then also have had a conversation with some of our business people that I believe are customers of border states, and, um, I've heard nothing but expressive support and encouragement for moving forward the project. And I think the, some of the impacts that beyond just having the business and the, and the, that presence here for the city of Marshall, it also gives a lot of our contractors and service people and, uh, competitive advantage also by having border states here, uh, right in the backyard as their supplier also. So I think there's other hidden benefits or extended benefits that we can't capture in our review and proposal that bring added value to the community. So, uh, I'm certainly in support of this.
Thank you. Other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close? Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, this is Bentley Graves. Uh, I just wanted to echo some of what Sean said, and, and, uh, I've been, been working with, with Sharon and her team on this abatement proposal, and just want to, uh, offer our, our gratitude to her and her team. Um, the, the city was, uh, was very actively engaged with border states from the very beginning, she said, and, and, and helping to keep border states in Marshall. And, uh, you know, this abatement package is gonna, is gonna leverage significant investment from, from border states in the community. And as was mentioned by both Sean and Sharon, we'll, we'll make sure that this, um, this keeps, uh, border states in Marshall for the long term as a, as a Marshall-based business and really positions it to, to capitalize on future opportunities for market growth in the, in the region. So thank you to, to, to the city team and, and, uh, thank you, Councilman Schaefer, for those, those, uh, those positive comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graves. Any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass unanimously. The, uh, we'll now consider the resolution that would approve the business tax abatement. Is there, are there any questions about the resolution?
I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller.
No.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you, and thank you to the representatives from border states. We look forward to your investment in the, in the community and your continued presence in the business community in the region. Thank you. We'll move then to the consent agenda, uh, bringing the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda, and they include, consider the approval of the 2021 temporary and seasonal employee wage schedule, consider the resolution de-certifying tax increment financing district two dash four, the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. We have a payment application to Magni Construction. We have a resolution regarding the FCC Form 394 consent for the assignment and transfer of the control of cable television franchise. Consider the approval of the various liquor license and tobacco license renewal. Consider the annual agreements, um, for renewal of Lutheran Social Services and Marshall Area Senior Citizens for 2021 for the mill site. Consider the approval of the taxi cab license renewals. Uh, we have a change order with City Hall and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Number seven and number 11.
Any other item?
Number four, please.
Any other item? If not, I would entertain a motion for the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, uh, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda item number four, uh, the, you consider the approval of the 2021 temporary and seasonal employee wage schedule with us tonight, also as Human Resource Director, Sheila Dubs, that will address any questions. Russ, you had a question on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I just want to thank the, the committee members for their, for their work and, and putting this together and presenting it tonight too as well. I did have a chance to visit with the chairman, um, uh, John De Kramer, and just asked a couple of questions. I, why, I'm all in favor of the, uh, the aquatic center increases. I think those, those, uh, temporary employees, after seeing the wage schedule deserve even much more than what we are planning to give them tonight. I mean, we trust them with the safety of our children, our, our community's kids out there, although it didn't happen this summer as much, you know, and in typical summer, there, you know, there's a couple hundred kids out there every single day. So, um, I think that this is, uh, the, as far as the, um, aquatic center, I, my feeling is that these, these people are even still continue to be under paid. Where I have a problem is, is, is the three items on the building, uh, come, come back with the, uh, Director of Public Works. We have a building custodian that's going up 12.9%. We have a office assistant that's going up nine and a half percent, and we got a public wage worker that's going up 15%. I'm not saying they don't need a raise, but I think that these, most of these are double-digit increases. I think that they're for a temporary schedule, for a temporary employment, I think these are pretty significant, and I would like to see at least that maybe these three get pulled out, and because I think we probably have other temporary or seasonal employees. I didn't see anything on here about, uh, park and rec staff. I could be, I, you know, I could be miss, missing them. I probably did, but I think that we need to address overall our temporary and our seasonal wage schedule. So again, I'm just opposed to those three positions, and, uh, I'm not opposed to the aquatic center. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sheila, I'll, I'll turn or direct.
Thank you, and Jason, um, if he's, uh, available, can assist me with those, three of those positions as well. Um, I'll start with the public waste worker. Uh, the proposal for that position, um, is reflective due to the nature of both the work and the fact that we have had great difficulty in recruiting applicants for that position for now two summer, two seasons in a row. Um, we do not have difficulty recruiting for the parks department, and that is a separate line item, the parks maintenance worker. Um, but we have great difficulty with the public ways worker. The nature of the work is different for that position, and, um, from my understanding, they are, they're not located in our parks. They're located in our public ways and at our airport and along our streets doing the maintenance work, um, for those areas, which places them, um, I think in, I'll call less desirable areas of the community to do the work in where there's additional traffic, um, and, and dust and dirt and such like that. So that is a position that, um, we're trying to, um, increase the bottom wage to increase the number of applications that we receive and our ability to fill those positions. The custodial position, uh, we, we generally have not needed to hire that every single year, but when we have gaps in our own service levels, there are times when we do need to hire that position. We have great difficulty again with that, even on our part-time wage schedule. We have a very limited number of applications when we do post that position. So in increasing that pay rate, we're just simply trying to garner additional applications for hard-to-fill positions. Um, on the office assistant pay scale, as Jason mentioned in the, uh, background memo, uh, the, the last time that position was updated on the temporary schedule was in 2011. Um, we have, um, hired into those types of positions, again, when we have gaps in our full-time staff and/or when additional assistance is needed. And the thought behind that was, um, simply to gain, uh, either a more experienced or someone with an increased skill set into those positions, and that is why the wage increase was requested there. Jason, if I left anything out of that, please jump in.
Thank you, Sheila. Is Jason on?
Yes, Mayor.
Do you have any additional comments, Jason, you want to make?
Um, just briefly, you know, Sheila did a really nice job of summarizing, uh, what we were trying to bring forward. Um, I would just reiterate that two out of the three are not typically staffed positions, you know, with the, um, office assistant and the building custodian. And when we look to hire in the temporary schedule for those positions, it's because we have an immediate need that we need to satisfy, and we, we don't want to be scratching around just trying to get an applicant. So it just gives us more leeway to attract more talent for the temporary work and to be able to pay what they're worth, if they're worth a little more on the schedule. Um, it doesn't automatically mean we're going to be paying the top end of the schedule. It just gives us that flexibility when we're in a pinch. And the public ways worker, uh, Sheila already commented, we have a hard time filling that position.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, there may be some comments from the personnel committee who reviewed this recommendation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on that, and we did spend a, a substantial amount of time discussing primarily the, the, uh, lifeguard, the pool, uh, personnel, and then also the public ways and, uh, looking at the difference between the, the functions in, in the parks department and looking at, at a lot of the work that the public ways employees, seasonal employee has to do. It's not only a little bit unfavorable or less desirable work areas and work conditions, it's also a higher risk that you wouldn't normally put the same employee that you would trust on a lawnmower on a flat surface at a park, uh, mowing some of the dike areas along like ditch 62 and some of that other area. So I really do think that this does, uh, justify consideration of a higher wage, uh, wage scale to hopefully attract a more experienced employee.
Any other input from any members of the council?
Just if I could, a comment on that, uh, that really some of these, uh, wages that we're talking about here are really market-driven. There's, uh, other places in, uh, the community that, uh, someone looking for a temporary position or seasonal work, summer job, um, you know, that do pay, actually pay more than these, so we're trying to keep up with the market on this.
Other input?
I'm the only one left on the committee, and I agree with everything that's been said.
So what's the direction of the council?
I would move the approval of the temporary wage schedule as presented.
I will second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda item number seven, um, which is, uh, transfer of the cable television franchise. Glenn?
I was wondering if you could bring up page number 41. Okay, uh, my concern is regarding the financial information for clarity. One of the indications of whether or not you can pay your bills within the next year is something called the current ratio, where you take your current assets and divide it by your current liabilities. And again, the idea is you have enough short-term assets to pay your short-term liabilities. Well, in 2018, the current ratio for clarity was 1.48. In 2019, it went all the way down to point 48. They have twice as many current liabilities as they have in current assets, and, and that's not a good indicator of your ability to pay your short-term liabilities. Uh, I also noticed that they had a loss of 3.4 million in 2018, and in 2019, it's all the way up to 25.2 million. So, uh, financially, things don't look so good for clarity. So, you know, I have concerns about their ability to pay their short-term debts based on the ratios and based on the information that's available here.
Thank you, Glenn. Um, are there concerns that member, members of the council may have?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I also had concerns about this, and I did make a couple of phone calls today and tried to flush that out, and, and I believe that the, the very factors that Glenn pointed out are the reason why this is before us tonight is that this is a new investor group that's come in to work through these financial issues, and I think that it's, it's fairly well-understood that right now, these types of franchises are working with some pretty stiff or tough margins, and I, I believe that this is, is, uh, you know, probably not very unusual. The, my concern that I had was the protection of the, of the patrons in Marshall being able to continue to have service and in talking both to Scott and reviewing what the, uh, the attorneys have, uh, cast on this is that, um, this, uh, presentation or this proposal in front of us is precisely what needs to happen, and that we do have assurances or, or some measures that if they do default, there are other avenues that come forward in order to ensure the service. This really doesn't expose the city for a loss. We have our franchise fees that come in, and we also have the protection, um, with the, at the, at the end of their, uh, and I can't think of the term, and I don't see it here, uh, on the very back of the agreement, the submittal support documents that were submitted, but, but we do have some recourse with them if per, you know, for fact that VAST or their, uh, parent companies are, are not able to fulfill.
Is Scott Vandermillan on the call, on this, on this meeting?
I am, Bob.
Scott, uh, do you have any, um, input regarding, uh, the questions or the discussion?
I would just concur with what council member, um, Councilman, uh, Schaefer said, uh, in our conversation today. I just shared with him that this is essentially why, why Clarity is looking for this, um, equity investor. Um, I spoke with the chief executive officer of VAST, otherwise known as Clarity, and they have no intention of, um, leaving Marshall. Um, this is just a way for them to, um, be able to pay their bills, so to speak, and I can't speak to their specific financials that Councilman Bayercoller alluded to, um, but we have every assurance from both their CEO and our existing agreement, um, that VAST is here to stay.
Thank you, Scott. Other questions the council may have? Dennis, do you have any comment?
Not any specific, other than the very end of this agreement. It does talk about that if there are performance bonds or corporate parent guarantees in place, that they remain in place. So I will check the existing agreement to see what guarantees we might have that would stay in place.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I did ask Scott about that, and he said that those are in place, and I also believe in reading the opinion that came from the attorney that reviewed this is that the city doesn't really have the option of denying this based on the financials that have been presented, and I believe that's, I, I understand that to be correct. They could move forward with this without our approval.
Right. Oh, so essentially, we're just, um, acknowledging the change of the investment structure of the ownership of the various entities that are stacked on top of each other that ultimately own what we know as VAST here. Any other input? If not, you have a recommendation before you? What is, are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, agreement.
Motion by, motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
So I guess my question would be, given what Dennis just said, do we need to give him time to look this over a little bit more to give us more guidance and table this?
I, I don't think so. I, I think as Mr. Schaefer indicated, Scott has reviewed that, um, I guess, had I known this was an issue, I could have verified it, but I think if Scott's taken a look at it, Scott was intricately involved in the negotiation of this franchise agreement, and if he says it's in there, I'm going to trust him that he has that in place.
And I could amend, uh, say, I could amend my emotion to include, uh, a portion that, uh, upon approval of, uh, the attorney.
Are you, you?
I would, uh, make that a motion if that's agreeable to a second.
And Jim, are you agreeable to that as the second?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Okay, with that amended motion, any other discussion on the motion?
So to be clear, the financials. So to be clear, the financials are not on the city if they, if they go under.
Uh, that is clear, yes.
Is there a backup plan of fast? I mean, VAST is here to stay. They've given Mr. Vandermillan their assurance of that. However, if they go out of business and all the, all previous set assurances may not be valid anymore. And do we have a backup plan? I can't imagine that there wouldn't be a cable company willing to come in and jump onto the market, but I don't know.
And that was one of the questions that, that I had also pursued today is what is the option? Because the last thing, especially under the current situation of, of high, high end of a lot of people teleworking, myself included, get my, my network through VAST. I don't want to be left high and dry. And my understanding is, is that what's in our public right of way in the agreement is, is would be able to be operated or, or fulfilled by either one of the existing or, or a new service coming in. But, you know, I, I trust Scott's opinion. Scott also taught, you know, the attorney that worked through, through this agreement is kind of the, the specialist in the state for these franchise agreements. So um, again, I, I certainly don't have that depth of understanding and, and I tend to want to trust the people that, that that's their arena and that's the opinion that we've gotten. And I mean, I think that the cable franchise business is not one I would be investing my money in. So, you know, I understand the difficulties with technology coming out. They're probably living on a year-to-year basis.
I just comment that in the past, this is, you know, not unusual for this type of business. And in fact, this company has gone through several name changes over the period that been on the council. So.
Right.
I think this is the third one that I've lived through.
Third, it is a certain number of three or four in the names.
And Councilman De Kramer is correct and um, Charter has done the same thing with us over the last five years.
Oh. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? If not, I'll move us to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda item number eleven, that is a change order for City Hall. Glenn?
I, I'd just like somebody to explain it.
Um, Sharon? We have had this change order uh, for quite some time. I do have our building inspector slash official, uh, plan reviewer, Ilya Gutman on this call or as part of this meeting as well. But uh, we, as most maybe know, we did extend the roof from the existing city hall roof. The one roof is rigid, the, the, I believe it, I gotta look back at my memo here. The other roof is flexible. And there needs to be a way to make those two roofs kind of coincide with each other to avoid damage. And um, as you see here, uh, it results in a change order and a cost of eighteen thousand eight seventy-five. I probably did a terrible job explaining that. So Ilya, if you want to add anything uh, to help explain that first, that would be great.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh, basically it comes to the, the fact that existing roof is cambered a little bit to allow for flexibility and the new roof is flat. It was really when they checked the roof and they looked at it before construction, it was really hard to see because I mean, obviously the insulation is there. So you cannot say much about how the structure is done. So uh, they're trying to accommodate this and they don't believe that uh, whatever this change aura would have been any, the amount of this change order would have been any significant difference if this were included in the very beginning as a part of the project, which should, should have been uh, the part of the project regardless, whether in the beginning or as this change over. So the difference in money is minimal of any.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. Thank you, Sharon, for the explanation. Other questions that council may have?
So there was no way for the city or anyone else to know ahead of time that the uh, existing city hall roof system was flexing. We, we didn't know what type of roof we had on there before.
Well, that we knew the type of roof. We didn't know how it was exactly designed, that it was designed with a camber. It was difficult to pick from the, looking at this roof, a beacon, the roof. Because the camber is just a couple inches on the sixty feet. That's really, you don't see this thing when you look at that. It's not visible.
Other questions? Okay, you have a change order before you? What's the wishes of the council?
I'd make a recommendation to approve the change order.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion?
I just should note that this is really just the cost of the construction that had it been known, it would have been included in the original bid at that price. There's no extra, I would say there's no extra engineering costs, things like that. This is purely just the cost of the materials on the construction to make the change.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
No.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Uh, we're going to move forward then to a new business and I'm going to uh, make a change on the order. So I would like to move agenda item number sixteen to the first item of new business. Is that okay? Any objection from the council? Okay, so the representatives um, from Shades of the Past, uh, past uh, are uh, present. So so agenda item number sixteen would be to consider the request of Shades of the Past Car Club for a roll-in on May sixth, twenty twenty-one. Not sure what staff has this.
I, I, probably Jason?
Jason, do you want to address this?
Yes, ma'am. Um, so we received a request from Shades of the Past Car Club for a closure of Main Street between College Drive and North Sixth Street, as identified on that map in front of you in green. They're requesting that uh, next year, May sixth, twenty twenty-one, it's on a Thursday from two PM to ten PM. The stated purpose is uh, to, to promote business downtown and, and bring the cars downtown and, and have a, a small event. With this not being a typical uh, yearly detour of Main Street through Marshall, staff wasn't sure if we should just go ahead and, and handle this one. We wanted to open this up for council discussion and council input. So that's why we're bringing it here tonight. And as the mayor mentioned, there are representatives from Shades of the Past present to um, answer any questions you might have. So the alternatives are to uh, go forward with the plan as outlined or um, of course not, and maybe discuss different alternative options.
Hey, thank you, Jason. Are there any questions? Do either of you want to make any comments? And if so, we'll have you use the microphone. Maybe just kind of explain what, what the plan is.
Happening, yeah.
Uh, sure. I'm Chad Y, a, a board member on the Shades and we come up with an idea to kind of promote business downtown. Um, it's been a hard year with COVID and uh, we're kind of looking at it like people are going to want to get out. Maybe we're getting at the tail end of COVID right now and and kind of give the businesses downtown a little shot in the arm. So we're, we're going to invite uh, trucks, cars, motorcycles, whatever you got, come on down and uh, we'll have some events and things like that. So.
Thank you, Chad. Are there any questions?
And just missed comment, this, this does not replace your usual Shades of the Past.
This will not, we, we will still have the car show in June.
And Craig?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know a couple of communities, I know Abasso does something similar to this during the summer and it's extremely popular and and I think it's been a plus for their community. And I know that also the city of Henderson does this fairly routinely during the summer and it is also very popular. And I think this is, it's a really good thing to see the, the thoughtfulness of the groups and the, and the um, keeping our, our main street and our downtown businesses in mind and, and to do this is a real community thing. I think it fits good with the Thursdays on Third and all those other things where we focus on our community. And I, I think that it, I really appreciate the, the Shades of the Past Car Club uh, thinking about that and bringing it forward. I, I think it's a great idea.
Any other input from the council?
I have a couple of questions. Uh, one is, uh, have we talked to the business owners on Main Street, what they think of it? Of closing up Main Street like that?
Uh, yeah, we.
Some input from them. And then the second question is, is there, is there a reason they couldn't maybe use a side street instead of Main Street for this?
Um, we, yeah, we did have a brief meeting with the, uh, chamber members about a month ago. And uh, there was quite a few that were in favor of uh, working with us and uh, they, they had a few great ideas, you know, like a scavenger hunt, uh, uh, different things like that. And um, what was the, the second part of the question, second question?
About using a side street.
Um, we did think about uh, using maybe Third Street as an alternative. The reason for the whole Main Street would be to uh, get as many businesses, uh, you know, get as many cars parked as, in front of as many businesses as we could. So.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions?
Or just another piece of input and support is I think that, that stopping vehicle traffic and putting parked vehicles with, with pedestrians is probably a big advantage for the businesses to also get some visibility rather than having people drive down Main Street, have them walk through Main Street.
Thank you, Craig. Jim, you had a comment? Or not? Okay, other input?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Jason. Uh, would we then close off like Third and Fifth Streets so there's no cross-traffic going through there?
We would.
Thank you.
Other input? If not, uh, is there a motion to approve the request?
I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move that then to agenda item number thirteen. Uh, uh, this would be the truth and taxation public um, presentation. Uh, I will call on Sharon Hanson, city administrator, I believe, a number, you have some staff that will also be participating in the presentation.
That's correct. Uh, we have assisting with the presentation tonight, uh, city assessor Dave Parsons got uh, some of the slides. And also Annette Storm, who recently came back from leave uh, soon after Thanksgiving. And she has been finalizing some of the, the budget and the levy numbers. So I'll try to proceed with the slide presentation. We did do some minor modifications to the slides. So what you see in front of your screen is, is what you should be looking at, not the, the packet materials. We're going to cover um, similar to what we did in preliminary levy discussion, tax capacity rates comparisons. We'll talk a little bit about historical tax levy. And then the twenty twenty-one tax levy and general fund impacts. And then our recommendation. And I believe uh, Dave is going to talk for the few, first few slides of this presentation.
Thank you, Sharon, council. Uh, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this uh, first slide is basically just a kind of a historical snapshot of uh, the tax capacity that we do have here, Marshall, going back to uh, just a quick reminder, review of what tax capacity actually is. The assessor establishes an estimated market value that is taken by a class rate established by the Department of Revenue to determine the net tax capacity. There's other calculations in there as well as far as homestead versus non-homestead properties, special exclusions, um, many different programs out there to derive at that tax capacity. And the, the tax capacity is uh, one part of the formula that times rate equals uh, your levy. So you can see here historically, uh, our current tax capacity is twelve million six hundred and three thousand eight seventy-three. Now, this is prior to TIF. So you'll see some different numbers periodically and we just want to make sure we're looking at uh, there's, there's a set of tax capacities before the TIF is taken out. Um, so this would be all prior to TIF. Uh, Kyle, if you could, next slide? Back one.
Sorry about that, Dave.
This here is again, kind of the same graph, only we've included all three of the taxing jurisdictions, the, the county in the light blue, the school district in the orange in the city. So it kind of gives you a, a idea of, of how that pie looks and, and how we're all kind of included underneath the county portion of the tax cap, capacity. There you go. Uh, historic, historical extension rate. Um, this is just a byproduct of what you as a council establish as the levy for the next payable year, divided by that tax capacity is going to get you that tax extension rate. So this is just a byproduct of those two numbers. So you can kind of see what that looks like here historically. Sharon, did you want to comment on this one or did you want me to kind of just go through this?
I can start. Um, this is a chart that Dave Parsons has put together, I think, for the last three years. It is um, become uh, uh, something that other communities have actually, actually requested from the city of Marshall. And I appreciate the work that Dave does. He actually requests this information from other taxing districts prior to the Department of Revenue. So um, it's, it's a really good look at some other communities uh, in comparison to Marshall. So um, as you can see here, out of twenty-four cities, we are the seventeenth lowest um, in terms of our tax rate. The, I, I know that the council is appreciative of, of comparisons. And I don't know if Kyle can do this. I did send you a couple of other Excel spreadsheets this afternoon. And I don't know if you want to bring those up now or you want to wait till the end. Um, but I do want to show those as well. And you advise, Kyle, do you want to show that now or later? Okay. I can email it to you again too, if you need it. Either one. Gee, they, I, they aren't going to be that great. I'm sorry for the suspense. I will email this out as well. Um, but what I did is uh, took um, more comparable cities, I would say. Even though some of these cities were included in the previous chart, this uh, more aligns with the population. They're non-metro um, communities that have the same population as a city of Marshall. And um, it also excludes some of the smaller. it also excludes some of the smaller communities that were in the previous chart. Um, it's not necessarily fair for the city of Marshall to compare with some of the smaller communities. And I'll show you another Excel spreadsheet that kind of tells you why. I mean, it's mainly based on tax capacity. But going back to the other Excel spreadsheet again, um, I think the, the two things, and I'll email this to you to kind of pick from this is that each city has really their own needs and to look at maybe a percentage uh, increase is, is really not enough. You really need to look at the capacity, what their levy is. You can see here, like New Ulm, their levy is, is, um, is quite high, if I remember. I'm trying to look at this from far away. Maybe it's not.
Seven point seven.
Um, yeah, well, it wasn't them. It was somebody else then. Red Wing has a really high levy. Um, I believe Hutchinson does too. Again, I can't, I can't see this. I'm sorry. From a, from a distance, but I also think another key factor on this chart is to look at the amount of local government aid, which is based on a needs formula. There's, um, three different calculations that go into the local government aid. Some of these communities that, that have the same, um, population may get quite a bit more local government aid. So, um, again, for the city of Marshall, we may, we may want to compare with Wilmer and Hutchinson and things like that in terms of population, but you really do, do need to look at kind of how each, um, city, um, comes up with their levy. And of course, you know, Marshall has some unique needs as well. Uh, being a, a city that has, um, flooding and surface water issues over the years. The far right column, I did list out, uh, the preliminary levy for, uh, these communities. And as you can see, uh, on average for comparable cities, they were at 4.5% in the preliminary levy. We set our preliminary levy at 3.5%. I am not, uh, wasn't able to get the final 2021 levies. I think there were three communities that I could find that did set their final levy last night. Um, and I did list those. So once we get closer to our final adoption, I will also input those numbers for your knowledge and, and send that out. The other spreadsheet, uh, that Kyle briefly showed, and he can show this again. This was shared by EJ, uh, with me earlier today. This does show preliminary levy, uh, increases for some of the communities. Uh, but this is a really good spreadsheet too, just to kind of show you the different taxing districts, all the townships, the school districts. And then if you go up Kyle, it'll show you, uh, all the communities, uh, in the, in Lyon County. And as you can see, some of the smaller communities are, are in double digit, um, preliminary levy increased numbers. And again, um, you know, the tax capacity is limited and the strains on their budget and levy are, are, um, maybe so, um, more strained, if you will. And, uh, it results in, uh, a, a larger impact percentage wise on, on their levy. Now, if we could flip back to the PowerPoint presentation. I did want to just include a little, um, paragraphs on statewide. Uh, what we're seeing preliminary numbers and, and this is from the department of revenue. Cities across the state averaged a 4.5% increase in the preliminary levy for 2021 and counties, uh, were, were far lower. One of the discussions I've had, uh, with some of the council members prior to tonight is uh, how do we compare with counties? And, and we can do a lot of analysis, but really it's not fair to compare to counties. Cities really need to compare with cities. Uh, the revenue streams are different. The, uh, the amount of aid is different and there's different forms of aid uh, that counties may get that cities may not. Cities, on the other hand, have enterprise funds, fees, services, things like that. Um, so it, it, it is not fair. We have seen over the course of the last, I don't know, probably five to 10 years, counties using additional revenue streams, sales tax revenue for road and bridge, wheelage tax, increases in wind production tax. Uh, it has definitely helped, I believe, alleviate some of their, their budget and levy pressures, but they also have, uh, have some strains as well. Human services. This year, public health, jails, uh, law enforcement, things like that. So, but I just wanted to kind of point out, uh, where we're at. Again, statewide 4.5, the city currently is at a 3.5 preliminary levy increase. Historically, uh, and I've got another chart that just kind of goes, um, over the last 10 years, we, we're right around a little over 4% uh, levy increase when you look at uh, the last 10 years, but this just puts it, puts it on a graph. Um, I, I always contend that really to, um, pay for the expenses on a year-to-year basis, you really, really should be at 4%. And I know, I know that's not where we want to be today. And I know that puts strain on, uh, our taxpayers. But, uh, reality of revenues and expenses and just, um, you know, the, the, the cost of those services from one year to the next really does equate generally to 4%. I don't think it's out of line. Here's the chart that shows, uh, the percentage increases over the last 10 years. Um, you know, maybe it isn't fair to go back 10 years. There's a 0% in there. Um, then there's a higher one in there too. You kind of throw those out. We're still generally around, uh, four to four and a half percent. Tax capacity increase, um, this goes back to the previous slide that Dave presented. I know that Dave, uh, discussed briefly a little bit about TIF being included or not included. Uh, this is after a TIF deduction. And what you see here for our, our tax capacity increase is 1.37. I'm actually on a later slide, going to have Dave talk a little bit about that 1.37. If you remember in an earlier presentation, uh, for one of our first budget presentations, a little bit higher. And I know I asked him, uh, late last night why that is and uh, he'll, he'll do a much better job than I kind of explaining, uh, why that is and what, what it really means in terms of significance on, on the budget and levy. We have a focus on this, a big, big focus, but there's so many different implications on, on that rate of growth. Here's just a look at the historical general fund levy. Uh, one comment on this is if you recall from 17 to 18, we did include the library, um, funding as part of the general fund. It is now incorporated into that. That's why there is a, a big jump with that. Debt service levy, um, this year we're down slightly, uh, not a huge amount. But one of the reasons we are down in the debt service levy is to, in order to reduce the preliminary levy from 3.5 and earlier, we are, we initially started at 6.47. We did, um, reduce dollars in the 2021 levy, uh, to help lower the levy for 2021. I think we typically have put in 50,000 on an annual basis to help make up for, for some of that bonding that we do in a previous year. We did, we did not do that for 2021. So it is going to put us a little bit behind on debt, debt reduction, and I'll talk about that a little bit later as well. Capital improvement. We've had some discussions about this previously. This now is, um, what we typically utilize for our equipment. We did have an equipment review committee go over this. When we come forward with the final levy, we will uh, give you this listing again, just, um, so we have it all in, all together for the final budget levy, but, uh, this has remained uh, fairly constant over the years recently. Uh, EDA levy, uh, again, um, we realize there's increases. We've pulled the, the, uh, EDA into, uh, the city that has resulted in an increase from, um, as you see here. But, um, we are also looking at, um, some realignment of staff there. And, um, we are going to be taking, uh, a revised budget to the EDA board in December. Just because we did make changes with the EDA contracted services contract through the chamber. And we're now going to utilize in-house staff, uh, for some of that admin, but it has kept the EDA levy essentially flat. Uh, street levy. This is actually really a new, uh, levy portion of, of our total levy. As you can see, um, we recently started this and this is in our efforts to reduce long-term debt. And I know that is on the line as well. And, and if you want to add anything, I'll, I'll pause after this, but, um, this is our goal to build up this, this particular fund balance or create some funds where we can really kind of use it as a revolving fund for some of our street projects. We, uh, we'd like to increase it by a hundred thousand. And, uh, I think we went down to 50,000 initially. But again, to, um, to get from that initial budget and levy, we have cut back. And we are now only increasing the street levy, um, by 25,000. So again, it delays, delays re, debt reduction in terms of, um, in terms of lowering the levy for 2021. Annette, did you want to add anything on this particular slide?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. This just breaks down the, um, the, uh, divvying up of the revenue from the different sources. And as you can see, uh, 40% non-property tax, which is the largest portion of the revenue. And I apologize, I can't see the screen there. 38% for property taxes and 20% from local government aid. I do want to comment a little bit on local government aid. We've been fortunate. Uh, we have somewhere to county program aid, have had some increases in the last several years. It's maybe not as great as county program aid, uh, because of the formula. But we're really appreciative of the legislature's work in this area. We could go back in history, um, you know, 20 years or 15. It's, uh, it's really at the same level. Um, so one could argue just based on inflation, it should be a lot higher. The current level of local government aid is still lower than the 2006 local government aid amount for the city of Marshall. But, uh, we've also been fortunate to have some increases and it does help reduce property taxes on a local level. So that's been, um, a good thing for the city of Marshall. Budget levy and impact, um, very similar slide to what I presented before. Um, we have really kept most of the line item in the, in our budget pretty, pretty stagnant, um, really at 2020, 2020 levels. Personnel has always, uh, been an impact, uh, for the city of Marshall tax levy. And if you look at cities across the state, um, they would argue that health insurance and personnel are, are the impacts, but uh, we are in the people business, uh, and um, it is not, um, abnormal to have personnel be one of the larger impacts for, um, our tax levy. I did list the cost of living adjustment. I know we've talked in closed sessions about labor and union negotiations. Internal consistency is still the goal of the city of Marshall. And I also want to add, um, we get from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities comparable cost of living adjustments, um, from quite a few cities. If anybody wants to see where that's at, I know I shared that with the mayor, I believe over the weekend, and I can send that out. Um, we're, believe it or not, really not out of the ballpark, um, with the cost of living adjustment when we compare it with other cities. And I can also tell you, I've seen some early, um, some early results from recent negotiations of cities, even during the pandemic. Uh, they are not negotiating 0%. They are between 2 and 3% even during the pandemic when they have open contracts. And I will share that with you too. So, uh, health insurance is always a, a pressure on, on our, uh, our levy. We were able to moderate the increase for 2021. We have benefited from moving from PIP in terms of maintaining the, the, um, increase in health insurance, but nonetheless, the cost of single and family health insurance, uh, is expensive. I do think, um, for 2022, I'm just looking ahead. And I know this was mentioned during our health insurance presentation. I do think we got to look at contributions and how we compare. I think that is important. And see how we want to go about that. Um, local government aid, I want to only comment on that we did get a small increase. The league has, uh, expressed concern, caution, um, because at any given point in time, we may have an allotment. We know that the state budget forecast has done a complete flip reversal. So we feel a little bit better about local government aid, uh, at least for 2020. But 2021, we'll kind of see, kind of see what happens. We, uh, have continued to use reserve spending as part of levy reduction. And I mentioned about debt service. One other thing I'll just mention too, um, we have about $17,000, uh, as a new line item. It's for tax abatements. The, the tax abatements we grant, the, um, recipients pay their taxes and then they get a tax abatement check in return. It's different than TIF. Um, the tax capacity is factored in to the original tax capacity pie. And so, uh, to issue that particular incentive, it has to be in the form of a, of a check later on. Uh, but we've gained, uh, we think, um, capacity overall by the economic, uh, development tool of tax abatements. Uh, this is a really good chart. It's one of my favorites. I'm not sure that, uh, Annette and Dave particularly like it. And, um, let me just kind of say, we, we always have an internal debate about percentage increase. Should we really talk about 2 or 3% or should we talk about actual dollars? Uh, and the reality of it is the newspapers, the department of revenue, other cities, the state of Minnesota, uh, in general, they all refer to percentage increase. It's not so much about, um, actual dollars. But, uh, I don't know where I put my slip. I think the 3% when you look at our current levy, it's about $200,000 of, uh, new operating dollars for the city of Marshall. So you have to really maybe look at both, not just percentage, but what does that actually garner you in new dollars? And 211,000 uh, in a $25 million budget that excludes enterprise funds. If we includes enterprise business activities, you're at a $35 million budget. It's, it's not a huge amount. Uh, but in defense of where we're at and what we're trying to do, I understand the situation that our taxpayers are in. We have, uh, also looked at capacity growth rate. As I mentioned, the 1.37. If you, if you kind of look at that on the percentage increase, you're looking at a 1.63. I know that's not a, uh, always clear in terms of assessing. The 1.37 can change. The state revenue can, can change some capacity. People comply for homestead application and change it. And there's different tax court changes that there's different valuations that may change it. So it's not a number that is set in stone. But it gives you kind of a ballpark on, in terms of, uh, what we're actually looking at when you take capacity growth. But it gives you kind of a ballpark on in terms of what we're actually looking at when you take capacity growth rate and levy increase. And then finally, how does this impact the taxpayers? We give you the different values of homeowner, homestead, and then also commercial. The average home in the city of Marshall is 150,000. And so the average homeowner with a 3% levy increase, which was a direction that we did receive at the end of November from the council to go from 3.5 to 3%, is $10. I believe that the average commercial property valuation is about 350,000. So the average business will see an increase somewhere between $35 and $75 going into 2021. I'm going to pause there a little bit and see if Dave or Annette want to add anything to this particular slide.
Thank you, Sharon. You kind of covered it briefly there, you know, with the change in that capacity growth rate percentage there, the 1.37. You know, when we we give out those preliminary numbers and, you know, those are those are based off of a snapshot in time, if you will, back in the spring. After that, we have things, you know, the Board of Appeal changes, tax court settlements, mid-year homesteads. There's a lot of different variables that could happen throughout the year that can change that from which you as a council may have saw earlier this year. And it's possible that will likely, you know, fluctuate plus or minus by the time taxes are calculated, too. So it's 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 always kind of a snapshot in time as the discussions are being held. But that's any questions on that?
Just one, two additional really quick slides remaining. And then we can answer any questions. If I can get this to turn, maybe Kyle asked to help me here. I don't need to really cover this again. We've talked as a as a group about COVID and what that may look like for 2021. We're not entirely sure. We know that it's had some strain on sales tax for food, beverage, and lodging. Your sales tax has been maintained for the most part, if maybe not even a small increase. So that's been positive. But what does this mean going forward? Or will government? Will government see an impact more in '22 and '23? We typically have a delayed impact when there's stresses in the private sector. It doesn't happen immediately. We're usually later. And I list some other things here. I don't want to go into it. I did already talk about some of those. I do want to mention levy limits. I have experienced some levy limits. Maybe you have as well. When you're setting a levy, you do have to kind of have it always in the back of your mind. Could they implement a levy limit in future years? And you may become hamstrung. And again, granted, we have other business enterprises and fund balances and so forth to get us through. But it is something that does get brought up. I have not heard the league talk about levy limits nor the legislature, but we'll see what happens. And then I think there's just one last slide as part of the Truth and Taxation Public Meeting. We are required to announce when we plan on adopting the final levy in the budget. And staff has recommended that we adopt the final levy in budget on December 22, 5:30 during the regular council meeting. We feel pretty good about the general fund. We do want to shore up and triple check our enterprise funds, liquor store wastewater, our debt service, and Annette has indicated it'd be nice to have a little bit more time with that. And and maybe, just maybe, we could continue to fine tune general fund. Maybe get it slightly below 3% for council's consideration. I don't know if it would be much more than that, but I that is something we may try to work on, too, between now and December 22. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, that's all I had for a former presentation. There might be an individual in the audience who has a comment as well. I think one slide, maybe should highlight, I guess it's up now if there's any questions. And again, there might be a question from for members of the public as well.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. And first off, thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work that has gone into preparation of the budget proposal to this point. I'll open it up now for any questions, any discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of comments if I could.
Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, and I appreciate, too, all the hard work the staff has done. And I know that there's been a lot of council member inputs and discussions and and to Sharon and to Dave and to Nat and others. And and I really appreciate that. And one thing I want to point out more probably to the public is that as we're working through this, one of our effort, a couple of our efforts, one is to get more on a pay as we go on capital equipment purchases and that type of thing. So that does put strain up front on our general levy to get to that point and also to modify our assessment. Special assessments on improvements on the streets and sidewalks and that type of thing. And so as we look at that, and especially now, we've done that on our on our residentialals within the last couple of years, trying to bring that more into order. But we're also looking at doing that on our commercial properties. So again, when we get away from special assessments and go more to projects, that does put more strain again on the general levy. So I appreciate all the hard work and and I really want to say that, in my opinion, I think the city of Marshall has done a really good job over the years of managing their their fiscal plan. And I think it really shows, especially when you look at us in the comparative cities and then also look at our ratings and our ability to manage our projects and manage the debt and and the expenditures. I I think Marshall's done a really good job and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Craig. Other input?
I just have a couple of comments. I share Sharon's concern about the comparison table when we're comparing Marshall to small towns. And so my suggestion would be in in future years that towns like Tracy, Ballaton, Minniota, Cottonwood, and Glenwood not be included on the chart. Because like I said, and you, Sharon, has said, too, I don't think it's fair to compare Marshall's situation to that of small towns in our area. The other comment I would have is oftentimes we see preliminary levies for comparable communities. It would be nice to see a comparison of actual final levies over the, you know, the past maybe five years for Marshall and comparable cities. Because there's oftentimes a big difference between what the preliminary levy is and what the final levy is. And, you know, cities tend to have their preliminary levies higher. And the final levy often ends up maybe substantially less than the preliminary levy. So those are a couple of suggestions I have for the future.
And Sharon, I believe you indicated you're attempting to ask cities adopt their final levy to incorporate that into your presentation.
Yes, and the Department of Revenue has really good historical information on levies and local government aid. And and so it would be relatively easy to go back in history as well as waiting for this current year of when they're going to set their final levy from the preliminary.
Any other input? Are you here for this? Did you want to make a comment on this? Other input? If not, as Sharon has indicated in her presentation, we would consider the adoption of the final budget at the next regular council meeting, which is December 22. With that, then we'll move forward with Agenda Number 14, Consider the Approval of the Marshall Resilience Grant Program. This was actually discussed at the last city council meeting and then brought forward to this city council meeting for additional consideration. At that time, there was a some speculation, some uncertainty as to what a potential state special session of the legislature would adopt. And as we all know, that has not occurred yet. So we probably still have that same uncertainty. I believe, Sharon, if you want to introduce this, but I believe Lauren Deitz is also on the on the call at this point. But I'll turn to you for Sharon.
That is correct. The, as you mentioned, the city council did discuss this at the last meeting, referred it to the EDA Board. The EDA Board didn't meet last week. And Lauren Deitz, our EDA Director, did facilitate the discussion. And what you have in your packet is a recommendation from the EDA Board. And once Lauren kind of covers the program, we can talk about the pros and cons of moving forward with a grant program, waiting or improving it in some way, if that's a desire of the council. So Lauren, if you wanted to add your comments on what the EDA Board developed.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Al, do you mind giving me permission to share my screen, actually?
Go ahead.
Thanks. All right. So I was just going to give a brief overview of the program, even though you do have it in your packet. I still wanted to be able to walk through it a little bit. The program itself is just to support the businesses that were impacted by the most recent executive order. We do know a lot of our businesses are obviously still struggling during this pandemic. But we really wanted to put a focus on these businesses that have had to dial back or close down completely. Our original recommended amount was 2,000 per grant. I did put in here, this is dependent upon what council wants to do moving forward. If we are looking at 100,000 or a different dollar amount, this could fluctuate. We can go a little farther into, we do see 2,000 being beneficial, but we do know that needs are higher than that as well. Currently, we're looking at for-profit entities with commercial properties, loan or lease in Marshall. I underline for-profit because we did have discussions at our board meeting that we do have a few nonprofits that could also benefit. Ones that we discussed specifically are the YMCA and the Lyon County Museum. This, the for-profit piece, we actually pulled from another program that's being developed in Hennepin County. It is to limit some of the other businesses because we are looking at such a small pool of money for the number of businesses that are in need. The businesses need to be listed in EO 2099, generate sales tax, and still be in operation. We also are going to make them demonstrate their need through all this. We don't want businesses who are actually doing better than normal to take the grant money because it's available. We want to make sure we really are getting those with the highest need. Just a few other basic requirements, be in good standing with property taxes and with the state's open to general public and not home operation. We thought this was important because of the fitness aspect. We really wanted to make sure it was just the public gyms. And then for restaurants, we got a little more specific. And this was because fast food restaurants have had a tendency to actually be doing pretty well considering how their operations typically run. So we wanted to make sure those restaurants that had to close their doors to in-person dining were able to get those funds first. This is something we can discuss because, again, we do have sit-down restaurants that are in the franchise system that at this point would not qualify for the grant. And as Sharon discussed, I wanted to include a few pros and cons. Of course, we think that this program would be extremely beneficial and we know our businesses are struggling. We want to wait because we hope that there will be state or federal relief, although we don't know that that will be coming anytime soon. Will the 2,000 make a big enough dent for those businesses that are really struggling right now? In our discussions, we said 2,000 would help likely help with rent and utilities for the month of December. Hopeful that the dial back is just this four-week stretch and we wouldn't be looking any farther than that. Are we going to be able to impact enough businesses? Would we rather see the funds used at a later date for restart? And are we limiting some of these requirements too tight so that businesses like the YMCA don't qualify, restaurants such as Pizza Ranch and Perkins? So I just wanted to walk through some of those to make sure council does recognize that we we have discussed what this program will look like and what other options might be on the table as we move forward. Any questions on the program?
Open up for questions. Thank you.
I have a question. So a restaurant like Perkins would not qualify?
Technically, yes. That's how the program's written right now. So in going through my business list, I had identified four sit-down restaurants that wouldn't currently qualify. We could change that requirement, but then it does open the door to the fast food restaurants. And again, not that they don't need support, but I don't know that they need as much as our sit-down restaurants do.
Lauren?
Yes.
Could we change it to locally owned franchise restaurants? Because then that would kind of eliminate some of those other ones that, you know, a locally owned franchise restaurant.
Yeah, that would help a few. We still have a few that aren't locally owned. But that would be an option to help, again, kind of weed out the fast food at this point and make sure that we are getting those those sit downs.
Lauren, just a thought, and I apologize, I I wasn't able to help you out much last week. But one of the other perspectives here, instead of having it be a hard, fast requirement, you could state that maybe their ranking or their prioritization is lower, that it doesn't technically eliminate them, it just makes them lower on the list. And if there's additional funding remaining, maybe they then could receive it as well or be a grant recipient. But I'm not sure that's how you want to do it either.
And we did do something like that in our first grant program that gave priority to businesses that were directly impacted by previous executive orders. So that is an option. We do plan on doing a lottery-based system to make things as fair as we can. But because they have to demonstrate their impact, all restaurants would still have to show that they have that negative impact from 2019 to 2020.
Personally, I would be in favor of the inclusion of the sit-down restaurants, even if they are part of a franchise, assuming they don't have a drive-through option. I think, I really think that's probably what you and your board were getting at, is that those restaurants that have a drive-through option have been actually quite busy because people can't go to a sit-down inside restaurant. That probably is what you're trying to get at.
That's correct. It was what we saw as the most fair way to eliminate the fast food without directly saying that they aren't eligible. But I, yes, I would also be in favor of including those those locally owned franchise sit-down restaurants in the program, if that's what council would like to see.
Other input from the council?
I I appreciate the mayor's comment. I totally agree with what he's saying as far as the sit-down restaurants are concerned. And so I would I would support that idea. I've discussed this in the past, and my concern has always been that, you know, we should try and get the most money to those that are most needy. And I guess one of the concerns I have is the lottery system where it's it's a game of chance. And I would rather have those that are more deserving and more in need get more funds and those that have less need get, you know, fewer funds or none at all. So that would be a concern I have.
So just in in talking out loud, would that mean, for example, a business who has a higher percentage decrease from 19 to 20? Is it would just be developing those that ranking system? I think that would be my concern because everybody's operations are so different.
On a previous slide, Lauren, you had a pretty streamlined process for kind of determining eligibility and qualifications. I appreciate what Glenn's saying. That would add a additional level of complexity and maybe would slow the process in getting the funds out. Also wanted to make a comment about the, you know, $2,000. You know, two thousand dollars. Is is not a great deal of money for businesses that have a great need. But the intention is to help them out in the short term in the hopes that. Either state or federal aid would be available and ultimately that businesses will open up and, you know, our. Current pandemic restrictions, you know, will, you know, soon be behind us, but we don't know when that would would happen. So I think. As you fairly stated, you know, the two thousand dollars, first off, would help with some perhaps immediate needs that. Some businesses had have in terms of utilities or in terms of some immediate expenses that they have. But it's not going to solve the the issue. And the other, Lauren, you have a rough estimate, perhaps there's fifty. Businesses that may participate in this and that would, you know, while two thousand dollars per business is not a great. Great need by the time you add fifty of them, you know, that is a expense for the city that. It's probably nearing our capacity to do. I'd entertain other input, though.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Steve.
Well, when we were on the E D A committee, we discussed this in great detail and as you stated so eloquently, two thousand dollars for business that's really suffering. Is really probably not going to make a big difference. And so we talked about, do we give two thousand dollars to fifty businesses? Do we give? More to less businesses? You know, this is a Band-Aid on the hemorrhage. As Councilmember Bearcoher has said multiple times and multiple discussions and multiple debates throughout his tenure, we don't like to, he does not like to pick. Winners or losers. And so the lottery system actually alleviates the picking the winners and the losers, you know? Anybody who's getting this is technically already losing. We're trying to help as many people as we can with as much as we can. Knowing that it's just simply not enough. And we are really hoping for the states and or the feds, preferably and. To help all these businesses out as much as they can. That way we're getting city help, we're getting state help, we're getting federal help and. And even that might not be enough. And so we we talked a lot about this at the E D A and. This is what we came up with and I think it's a good thing. I do like the amendments that Lauren's already put in with. The sit-down restaurants, you know, that's, the franchises are tough because the fast food businesses are not hurting right now. That's. That's one market that has been showing to be really good.
Thank you, Steve. Other input? John?
Just an added comment on to what Dr. Meister said. You know, on behalf of the E D A, I really appreciate the input that was given here. We went through a lot of discussion to try to see. What, you know, we can do with the businesses and, you know, as we've said before, you know. Two thousand is nice, but it's not, you know, it's not a big dollar amount. There's a lot of businesses out there that need that help. We can't give as much as we would like to to help everybody out and, you know, it's just not, money's not there. But we're trying to do as much as we can with, you know, to help as many people as we can. So. I don't know. I I like the amendments that we've talked about. And I greatly appreciate your input because we're just trying to do as much as we can with what we've got, so.
Other input?
Um, I agree with what Dr. Meister and John said. I know, Glenn, I do agree that it would be. Great to sift through their paperwork more. I think a lot of businesses just would opt out at that point, too. It's just too much work. To get two thousand dollars to determine who deserves it more than the other person. So I think what the E D A has done, they've done a good job and I think it's, it looks good.
Any other input? If not, what is the action that the council wants to consider on the E D A recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Marshall resili- resiliency grant program.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve. Does clarification on the motion?
To in, to include the amendments as discussed as best able to incorporate.
And Steve, you agree with, okay. Now, discussion on the motion.
So I just want to be clear on this. So a restaurant like Perkins would qualify then?
That's correct.
Yeah, I'd like Lauren to answer that one. Yeah.
Yeah, we would just, I'll find a way to alter the verbiage a little bit to make sure that I have four. Specifically that I can think of off the top of my head that would now be included. Not exactly sure how we'll word that, but that we'll make sure that that can be included.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoher?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ La Bat?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Lauren. We'll move then to agenda number fifteen, the Marshall Visitors and Convention Bureau. We have update as well as to consider the twenty twenty-one service agreement. Sharon, I'll turn to you first.
Yes. The city and the Convention Visitors Bureau have been in discussions throughout the year. As mostly recall, we did do a contract amendment for the Red Baron Arena. Specific to that contract, service contract from October on forward. And we also discussed a revised twenty twenty-one service agreement as well. And it reflects a reduction from the twenty twenty, twenty twenty original agreement. It's about a forty. I believe it's a forty percent. Not quite that much. Maybe it's a forty percent reduction, I believe. And it kind of relates to the, to the impacts on our. Our food, beverage and lodging as you. We have talked several times tonight about and the reductions there. We do have also on the agenda tonight, in addition to the service agreement. A general update by the Convention Visitors Bureau. And to do that, we have President Cassie Weiss, the C V B Director. So. She's been waiting patiently and I I will, if it's okay with the mayor, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Cassie?
Yes, thanks, Mayor and Council. I'll just have Kyle, if he can pull up my PowerPoint. So my name is Cassie Weiss and I'm the Director at Visit Marshall. I started here in about beginning of April. So today, you can go to the next slide, Kyle, please. Some things we'll talk about, just twenty twenty in review, the services that Visit Marshall offers. Our financials from last year as well as the future, our goals for twenty twenty-one, and then we'll talk about. The Marsh and the Red Baron Arena as well. So twenty twenty in review, kind of like we've talked about a lot today, our lodging tax was down an average of fifty-four percent due to COVID. That was from April to July. And then that was down about an average of twenty-four percent for the rest of the year. I suspect that December is going to probably be more in that fifty range again, just with the shutdown and losing of some hockey tournaments. So we've been impacted a little bit, but we've really tried to focus our, focus on some digital advertising. Just getting a word out to our locals to support our local community and do the touristy things that we have in town that they maybe haven't done before. We also created a new website and a blog that follows the new City of Marshall branding. And then we adjusted our print marketing plan. We did a little bit less than we normally do, but we focused more on hunting, outdoor recreation. And day trips. So kind of more in this hour to hour and a half range of people trying to travel here just for the day. Some services that we offer, like I said, we do marketing around the region and the state as a place to visit. This year, kind of like I said, we focused on the day trips a lot more. Just being that there were so many stay-at-home orders and people weren't really ready to travel, but they wanted to get out and do something. Camden State Park was one of the biggest things that we promoted and I think they were extremely busy. We have relationships with the local sports associations and we're working on growing those as well. We assist them with their tournaments. And just trying to get more heads in beds and longer tournaments and more teams to come to town. We also do some hospitality services such as room blocks for sports tournaments. We're a communication partner between organizations, event organizers in the hospitality industry. So we send out a quarterly email that. That has upcoming events coming that goes out to our hospitality industry, our hotels, our restaurants, our shops, so that they know. What weekends we're going to be a little bit busier in town. And then we work with our local groups to provide community support and we do that in cash donations, marketing. Of their events or the organization itself. And then we did launch a tourism grant in twenty nineteen. That unfortunately didn't get to get used a lot just because of COVID. It's kind of more an event-based hospitality grant. So we're going to look at. Pushing that a little bit more in twenty twenty-one. So our financials, our direct spending is in marketing about twenty-five percent. We do about ten percent in a normal year. Of events and then community support of ten percent as well. We also have some indirect spending of our staffing. So we have two full-time employees, me and a full-time communication coordinator. And we also do some community marketing and advertising as well as some print materials such as visitor guides, printed maps. Our twenty twenty-one goals for Visit Marshall is just to create a stronger relationship with our sports associations and our local event organizers. Especially after the year of twenty twenty where almost every event had to be canceled or looked at a new way. We really want to make sure that those events are coming back to the community and are able to happen again. We also, like I said before, we'd like to get the word out to our local community about our tourism grants. Program and hopefully that those dollars can be used to be able to get their events started again. And then we'd like to strengthen our relationship with S M S U as well, providing the dorms with visitor guides and working with the admissions office on providing them materials when people are coming to tour. As well as doing some Marshall training to their ambassadors that give the tours. All right. So the Marsh, we had a lot of postponements and cancellations due to COVID. So at the Red Baron itself, we had nine events that were canceled on the expo floor. We had six Ice Dogs games that were canceled, two Maha tournaments, majority of Maha games. A good number of high school games as well as a high school tournament. And then in the Marsh itself, we had all spring high school activities canceled. Our United Soccer Association had to cancel their season. Our indoor fall high school activities had a shortened season. S M S U Athletics have been postponed until January and then we lost out on the marching band competition as well. So a lot of really big events that bring a lot of people to town, but we did have some events that were able to happen. Kyle, you can go to the next slide. Thanks. So we did get to have some fall high school activities and these did have limited fans, but we still did see a little bit of an uptick in people in town. Shooter Sporting Clays was able to host some trap shooting tournaments over the summer. And Mabo was able to host their baseball tournaments as well from July to August, as well as the Minnesota Sports Federation State Tournament. So at the Red Baron Arena, we, from January to March, everything was pretty much as normal. We were awarded the Bandom Regional, Regional Tournament. We were able to host that. And then in March, we were closed due to COVID. We were able to reopen in July with a COVID plan in place. And during that time, from July to November, since the last shutdown, we were able to get a lot of ice time booked. As well as host some events on the expo floor such as the Craft and Bender Show. We had one wedding in October and then. Some other smaller meetings in the meeting room as well. And then obviously, we closed again in November due to the governor's shutdown. But we look forward to January when we're hopefully, or December, end of December, when we're able to start again. If we are able to start in December, we will have the Maha season come back. The Ice Dogs season will come back, which I will talk about in a second, and then the high school season will hopefully start. So the Fairbanks Ice Dogs, we started this partnership with the North American Hockey League team out of Fairbanks, Alaska in about June. And it kind of just started with a random email that kind of bloomed into something a little bit more. They were looking for a home in Minnesota due to the. Restrictions in Alaska for travel. So we decided that we would do whatever we could to make, make Marshall their home in Minnesota, their temporary home. So in twenty twenty, prior to the shutdown, we were able to bring in an additional thirty hours of practice time and two hours of game time. And they are planning on returning December twenty-sixth. So they will be back in town and they are going to host. They're going to stay through January and February hosting six to ten games. And then they'll also have practice scheduled every day. And the nice thing about their practice is they practice at nine A M. So there's not a lot of. Other needed or desired ice time. We do predict that they'll have a community impact of about a hundred thousand dollars. And just like the biggest thing we did was creating a core group of people that would help make this work from Maha. Cody at the arena, Scott at Community Services, as well as some community members who were involved in the Ice Dogs in the past. So twenty twenty-one at the Red Baron, right now we have three new events that we're looking forward to hosting. The Taste of Marshall, the Boat and RV Show and a, the Fairbanks Ice Dog Season. And then we're really excited that as of right now, five of our annual events will, would like to come back to the arena to host again. And also as of right now, we have another six weddings booked for twenty twenty-one. Which is the same number that we had booked last year, but unfortunately due to COVID, we were only able to have one. So we're hoping that number grows a little bit. As we get to the holidays and more people start getting engaged. Some of our goals for the arena for twenty twenty-one are to utilize the meeting room and bathroom for more community business meetings. Work with the N A H L again for next hockey season about possibly hosting an exhibition game. And possibly book more weddings as we see the near end of COVID. So marketing that we did in twenty twenty for the Red Baron was the Minnesota Wild Game Day publication. We did have a featured article and an ad in Connect Magazine. We have listing on meetingpages.com and Wedding Wire. And then we did have a featured article in The Rink Live that was about Marshall and the Ice Dogs. And then we also worked on creating some different marketing brochures that were event and wedding specific. There's some examples on the next page. Some of the publications that were done. So our role as Visit Marshall at the Red Baron, we've done recruiting and event sourcing, marketing and event planning. We usually have about a ten thousand dollar budget for that. Event manager, post-event meetings, and we manage the major sponsorships as well as the dashboard sponsorships. This year, we were able to sell twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars in dashboard sponsorships compared to last year. We did about nineteen thousand. So we were really happy with people wanting to do some, do some advertising in the rink, even though it was kind of an unknown year. And then when we redid our contract in November of twenty twenty, we did start taking over scheduling. So we took a reduction in pay, but we started doing more work and we worked with Mary and she did a great job teaching us. How to do the scheduling. So we have fully taken that over now. We still ask Mary some questions every now and again, but. It's been a good transition and we've enjoyed doing it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Thank you, Cassie. Any questions? I thank you for your, uh, adaptability. You had a well-planned year that had to be adjusted dramatically and you, uh, you've done that adjustment and really kept the organization viable. So you're in good position when we do get back to normal. Sharon, anything that you have to add?
I want to clarify, I, I said it was a, um, 40% reduction from 2020. Uh, that was because the amended agreement that we did in October was a 40%. The only change to the 2021 contract that you have in your packet is it is a reduction of 2,000 per month, per month, which is, uh, near 30%. And as Cassie indicated, and this was, uh, also put in the, uh, amended contract at the end of last, at the end of this year rather, uh, she has taken on, uh, scheduling and that was noted in the new contract. So, um, staff, uh, have, uh, reviewed and discussed this and we are in favor of, um, of the new agreement for 2021.
Thank you. Is there, uh, are there any questions either for Cassie on her presentation or are there questions about the 2021 service agreement as proposed?
Um, I have a question. So it's a six-month contract?
Yes, that's correct. We thought after six months, we could relook at the, um, tax, sales tax to see if we can maybe get back up to that 7,000 that we were at originally. Per month.
What's the six months just because of the, the uncertainty of where, where things are at for the first six months? Right. Okay, other questions? If not, uh, the action item would be the 2021 service agreement. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Steve seconded, I didn't catch the seconded by Craig. Discussion? If that will move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, Cassie. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 17, the audio visual equipment and installation work. Sharon, you want to start this? Probably the, uh, City Hall Committee will have input also.
Yes, uh, we did review, um, want to pull this up on my computer as well. You'll bear with me here. We did have the City Hall Committee review audio visual equipment and insulation. An initial proposal, uh, for this particular work was in excess of 400,000. And, uh, the City Hall Committee directed, um, substantial reductions in order to get it to the amount of 252,000. The, uh, proposal includes, um, many different aspects of audio visual, uh, for meeting spaces as, as most of you are aware with the building design. We have, uh, increased meeting space just on the nature of, of our work and productivity, uh, with different presentation, equipment, uh, large screen TVs and, uh, the capacity to hook it up to, um, to our computers and interact with, um, some of those screens is very, very important. So, um, this is a proposal we got off the state contract. Uh, it is from Turney. And, um, the amount is 252,359. This is, uh, was included in our, uh, project budget, uh, not necessarily the original. It's not a part of the construction document. We're technically a part of the bonding, but we did have this as a project budgeted item. Um, and regardless of whether there was a new city hall or an old city hall or an existing city hall, uh, technology, audio visual equipment, uh, is something that, um, is something we would have needed to invest in, uh, and, and now with the, with the new city hall, it obviously has put it on track, um, near the point when we move in, uh, hopefully in, in May or June of next year. I want to, uh, again, just, um, maybe allow some time for the City Hall Committee to comment. We did have, actually have a subcommittee of the, of the City Hall. And, uh, John De Kramer, uh, really assisted us with, uh, some of his review based on his past experience with, um, with technical, uh, equipment as well. So I don't know if John, you wanted to add something to this particular proposal?
Uh, not too much. Uh, I think, uh, like, uh, Sharon Hansen said, we started out with about, uh, I think it was actually about 477,000 was the original quote and a little fair amount of sticker shock on that. And, uh, in the work with, a lot of work from, uh, Alex Peterson and Kyle Box and going through it as well, uh, making some changes, revisions. This includes all the equipment within the entire building, so conference rooms will have the, um, phone conference, video conference capabilities. Uh, there's going to be, uh, digital announcement capability in certain locations. Not everywhere, but, uh, in, uh, uh, lobbies and various places. Uh, a lot going into the city council chamber. That's one of the bigger areas where, um, there's, you know, things like the projector we're using here. Um, video conferencing set up, uh, so we can continue if need be with Zoom or whenever we need to. Uh, that's the location for one of, uh, the bigger screens for public to view. Uh, the sound systems, the mic systems, the, you know, you know, basically the technology for the building. So it's, it's pretty inclusive and maybe I'll just stop there and see if there's questions.
Thank you, John. Uh, thank you for your work on this also, as well as the rest of the City Hall Committee. Open up for questions.
Um, I, the only thing I want to add is, um, I want to thank John because as committee chair and wise enough to know, I know nothing about technology. So John did put a lot of time in this and then we did go over this. I know Russ had questions and we went through this, I think pretty thoroughly after that committee brought it back to us. So as chairman, I'm very comfortable with what, uh, value we have on here.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions or input?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to echo what, uh, Councilman De Kramer said. Uh, not only he put a lot of time, but the staff, Kyle and Alex, but, you know, one of the bigger areas is that council chambers. And, and if you look at the breakdown of the detail, just, just about 50% of the cost is going into that council chambers. You know, so we can, when we have to have full meetings or full council chambers, or we can divide that room off into, I think, three different areas, all those screens will be there. So, uh, again, 50% of this total cost is going into the council chamber. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. Any other input?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank the committee that put in all that work and, and I appreciate the fact that you guys were able to, to pare that down and boil it down into the presentation or the proposal that's here in front of us. And I, I appreciate that and respect the recommendation and I would actually move that we approve it.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, Kyle will move to a vote.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski? Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda I of number 18 also related to City Hall, the security door proposal. Sharon?
Yes, similar to the audio visual. Uh, the subcommittee also did review door security hardware. We, we, uh, I believe if you look at one of the bids, it also includes beyond board, uh, door security. It also includes, uh, video, uh, camera systems and a panic hardware system. The subcommittee, which John, John De Kramer also helped lead. We, uh, we decided not to pursue the panic hardware at this point. And then I don't want to get into a lot of detail. It may be something we add later. And the camera system, we're actually going to utilize the, um, the, um, expertise and experience of Alex Peterson and utilize some of the existing camera system when we, um, upgraded, uh, not too long ago in the old city hall. So for this particular presentation, we are just looking at door security card access. Again, similar to AV, with or without, um, a new city hall, we would be, uh, really working towards doors, better door security. As, uh, most of you may recall, City Hall was actually broken into, um, for, for, for lack of, uh, better words, um, we didn't really have a good security system. Um, it's quite easy to get in, actually, uh, following, uh, what happened. Of course, we know now more than we did back then. So, uh, we feel that this is, uh, obviously, uh, a very important and it was one of the key factors on, uh, reconstruction of City Hall as well as for better security overall. We were fortunate, um, uh, to, to get a quote from a local company, Living Connected. Uh, he's had some challenges with, uh, COVID himself and, um, so, um, but he's been great to work with and given us this quote. The other bid, uh, received, uh, was off the state contract. And, um, however, um, we feel that the, um, Living Connected is a lower cost based on, uh, comparison and, uh, the proximity of Living Connected as well, uh, located, um, near Marshall, uh, will help with service needs going forward as well. And again, I'll, um, be quiet here and ask if, um, Councilmember De Kramer would like to add something to this discussion.
John?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, to add in here. One of the, uh, we looked between the two quotes here, although one was a state bid. Uh, we're actually able to save money in going with the local firm because, uh, they're accustomed to working with, uh, uh, another, or a second vendor of doing some of the wiring that's needed. So we were able to roll all the networking, uh, uh, some of the AV, uh, some of the other equipment in and the low voltage wiring all into one, uh, um, package enough to put that all in and save some money that way. That ended up being a, uh, actually a fair amount out of there. And, uh, the other thing, uh, just keep in mind, if you go through the details of the bid, uh, what we're looking at here. There is, uh, I know some of you guys just love seeing change orders and, uh, but there will be a small change order that comes in on account of this because a part of the lock system was in the construction bid. And, uh, to make everything, I would say, uh, easiest term to make it a little more compatible, uh, power has to be run to each of the lock, uh, the rooms with the locks, a separate, uh, electrical. So that's some electrical work that's going to follow up here in a change order of our electrical system because that was not included in the construction. Um, they actually left out the, you know, they put locks in, but nobody included the, uh, the power supplies. So in order to get your power locks to work, you need some power to it. Um, and so that'll be coming in on a, uh, a, a small, uh, change order for the electrical system. Just to give you a little bit of advanced notice.
Okay, thank you, John. Open up for questions or, or other input?
If none, I guess I would approve, uh, make a motion to approve the, uh, um, work in construction for the security system.
Motion by John. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Russ. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda I of number 19, uh, Commission Board Liaison. Reports from my, uh, point, the Southwest Regional Development Commission, uh, will meet this Thursday. The, um, I represent the RDC on the area transportation partnership and they will meet by distance this Friday. There was a meeting of the, uh, of the committee I chair for the, uh, Region Revolving Loan Fund and the COVID Revolving Loan Fund. And they, at our meeting earlier this week, we approved, uh, two additional loans, um, um, for COVID impacted, uh, businesses in the region. And we will be meeting a week from Friday to consider three other applications. Currently there's, uh, the 1.48 million dollars as, that was received from, uh, federal EDA. There's approximately $540,000, um, currently that would be available for relending. So the goal that is to have that totally, uh, out to, um, um, businesses that have the need by next May 6th. Uh, with that, Craig?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Steve?
So, uh, Community Services did not meet, Cable Commission did not meet, EDA, we talked about, uh, tonight with our, uh, special meeting. And that is all I have to report.
Hey, Glenn?
Planning Commission meets tomorrow and then Housing Commission meets next week. That's all.
John?
Uh, like I said, EDA, we covered, uh, tonight and, uh, utilities did not meet. Russ, what was the last meeting?
Russ?
Uh, we all heard a report from CVB, so I won't take too much time on that. One thing that Cassie, that was brought up is that we were informed that the, and the good news, there will be a speech tournament in January and the bad news, bad news part of it, it's going to be virtual. So there'll be no hotel stays and no kids coming to town for the, one of the bigger events that Marshall usually has. Uh, Library Board meets next week. Police, uh, advisory, uh, as if you read in the, uh, admin synopsis, Ryan Hoffman was selected as the new sergeant and we will can, just start conducting, uh, detective interviews sometime next week. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. And Jim?
Um, the only one of mine that met was, um, City Council, or excuse me, was the Building Committee. And we discussed a lot of that tonight. There's also the PR force still floating out there that the committee, we, we've been working on that on the, um, add-ons because the hotel came down. And hopefully that's finalized, bring that completely to council in the next two to four weeks. But, uh, the committee and I, and I, we've been working, the contractors over to get the most favorable price for the city. And that's all.
Hey, thank you, Jim. Uh, we'll move on then to Councilmember Individual Items. Jim, let's start on your end tonight.
I have nothing.
And Russ?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
John?
I have nothing.
Craig?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
My only thing is, uh, again, putting on my public health hat. Wear the mask, wear them correctly. I still see an awful lot of people without their masks on over their nose, hanging around their chin. That's just not the way to do it. It's not going to protect anything. Um, there's no question masks, uh, protect. Uh, the vaccine is on the horizon, uh, where and when the public is able to get it. Uh, that's going to probably be six months to a year, hopefully sooner. Um, but that's the good news on the horizon. Um, watch out for Christmas. It's going to be tough and just hang in there, keep washing your hands, social distancing, covering your cough and stay home if you're sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And Glenn?
I have nothing to add.
Hey, the only thing I would have, actually two things. First off, um, I, I'm sure the public and, uh, council has had a chance to view this, but the, uh, light of the night at Independence Park is really well done and, uh, our weather has been so favorable now that, you know, a lot of people have been able to, uh, to walk through there. It's, uh, been warm enough. uh, been warm enough that the drive-through hasn't been able to be open yet, but likely that will change next week too. But the, um, um, it's really a, uh, a credit to, to Prairie Home Hospice and all of the volunteers that have worked and all the sponsors because it really is a, um, uh, really a marvelous, um, display at Independence Park. Secondly, for the council, and I would note that, uh, council member-elect Don Ed Blum is in attendance here. The, uh, I will be, uh, sending out a memo, uh, in the near future to the council about, um, assignments to boards and commissions in terms of which ones, um, you know, that council members would be liaison to. Uh, and we'll have multiple choices. And of course, one of the reasons that city government works is that we're able to, you know, split up the responsibilities and, uh, work with various boards and commissions and then bring that back to the council. Um, but there also is the opportunity of individuals want to make some changes and then, well, try to sort that out. Uh, so we do have a balance. So we'll have, you know, as in the past, uh, you know, probably what's your first choice? What's your second choice? What's your third choice? And then each of the council members would serve on, uh, likely two, uh, regular committees of the city council and anywhere from two to four, uh, liaisons to various boards and commissions. And with the, you know, the upper number being liaisons to ones that perhaps meet less frequently and lower numbers to the ones that, uh, have a little bit heavier responsibility. So, you know, look forward to, um, seeing that in the mail as soon as I get to it. So with that, uh, we'll move on then to staff reports and Sharon, city administrator?
Uh, I have nothing for this meeting.
Okay. Director of Public Works, city engineer, Jason Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on Thursday, uh, we'll be meeting with the Ways and Means Committee to discuss amendments to the special assessment policy. Um, I think that was referenced earlier tonight during the budget talks, but, um, focusing on the commercial industrial assessment maximums. Um, I'd like to thank Councilman Bearcoller for a lot of his work over the last couple of years on the assessment policy. Um, I would note that the attorney probably has not gotten through the, all the proposed changes yet, so we'll, um, await his review too before we bring it to council. Um, we should be soliciting proposals for the comp plan beginning, uh, next week. We haven't gotten that out yet. We're making a few changes based on some comments and input at the last council meeting, but we should be soliciting for proposals soon. And on the engineering side, we're working on a lot of, uh, plan and policy updates, uh, functional classifications of roadways, uh, state aid routes, engineering design standards, snow removal policy, sidewalk policy, about everything's getting a facelift. So, you know, I think we'll be coming forward in the coming months with some of that stuff. That's all I've got.
Hey, thank you, Jason. And city attorney, Dennis Simpson?
Don't record.
Okay. We'll move then on to the remaining items on the agenda, which include the administrative briefs that you have for your review, the information items, which include the building permits, as well as the listing of the upcoming meetings. Is there any input on any of those items? Is there anything else to come forward this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Craig?
Second.
Seconded by Steve to adjourn. Discussion? If not, by voice vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Little late there, but okay. Hopefully that was a night of, stop that.